Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Finance Committee meeting. My name is Pete Berube. I'm the chairperson of the committee. Tonight is the 26th of April, and I will call the meeting to order and ask that the FinCom members introduce themselves, starting down there on the left.
Sorry, yes.
John Stebbin.
Peter Underhill.
Joyce Poyardi.
Jody Garson.
Kathy McInnes.
Mike Crone.
John Lor.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We've had a streak of perfect attendance, and I want to thank everybody. I'm going to call -- again, I've already called the meeting to order, but I'm going to open the pre-town meeting, the public hearing. It is just about 7:05. We're going to get right into it. So just in terms of expectations for the committee, we're going to go through the motions informally. You can be as formal as you like, but you're not expected to be. So you don't have to read the motion, but it's certainly a good practice in order to do so for next week's town meeting. You don't have to go through your formal discussion, word for word or verbatim, or even if you haven't written up your discussion comments. But questions tonight will be helpful in the sense that if you're asked a question tonight, chances are that question should be covered in your comments, depending -- you know, you should at least consider it. You should include those comments and discussion and answers for next week as well. What else? Obviously, Mr. -- so I misspoke two weeks ago. Mr. Kennerreggi, in fact, will be the moderator for town meeting. He is not as incapacitated as I mistakenly led many people that he was. I've talked to him several times. He's no more incapacitated than normal under the --
[laughter]
Sorry, Bruce. So anyway, let's get started. We'll start with Article One, unpaid bills.
I moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,611,111, transfer $7121 from sewer enterprise, and transfer the sum of $6,553.27 from the water enterprise reserves for the total sum of $8,235.59 for unpaid bills as written in the warrant. Thank you. This article, if approved, is a semi-annual article that funds bills incurred from the previous fiscal year. The bills for the town meeting total $8,235.59 and will be funded from free cash sewer, water enterprise reserves. These bills occurred from the previous year, and the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Okay. It should be noted that the vote would require a four-fifths majority. Any further discussion? Ms. Harden? Just as a reminder, I certainly will entertain just about all discussion tonight from the audience and from the FinCom members. I just ask that you please step to the mic, introduce yourself, be recognized with your address, and then fire away.
Lisa Harden, 56 Walnut Street, Town Clerk. In my copy of the motion, it talks about sewer retained earnings and water retained earnings, not enterprise funds?
I don't know where you're getting that.
In the motions that were sent out?
See, I got that from --
So I'm just --
In your packet. In your packet. It's different from what you read.
Thank you.
And we -- Mr. Kozinski, do you have any concerns with us not reading the motions verbatim tonight, or would you advise us to do that?
I don't have any concerns, but I would just confirm that, yeah, the retained earnings is technically where it's coming from. So that's why the specificity in the motion.
I apologize.
So how about this, just for sake of clarity?
Let me reread it.
You don't need to reread it, but --
It's not -- I wouldn't say it's inaccurate. It's just this is more specific.
Yeah. So we're just going to make sure that we use the motions from the packet, and we will ensure that if there are any changes between now and next week, that, again, we use the packet motions. If -- I've done this in the past where I've cut and pasted and put my discussion notes and almost had a script. You just have to be 110 percent certain that you're using, when you cut and paste from the motion into some other document, say with your discussion, that it's the actual motion, because that will cause a problem if it's done at town meeting. So --
All right. So hopefully --
You're welcome for messing up. But they're done now.
Hopefully, everyone received the final motions today, which also had the articles attached for reference that assist the clerk's office and -- yes. So if there's any questions, please just let me know.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. So we're not going to vote. The committee voted already for recommend approval. Okay? No further questions? Article Two.
Article Two. I move that the town vote to transfer from the following accounts the sums of money listed below to fund additional wages and expenses to the accounts listed below, which were not sufficiently funded under Article Three, operating budget of the May 2, 2022 annual town meeting. Transfer from town general government, $42,000. Transfer from Health and Human Services, $43,858.64. Transfer from free cash, $50,000 even, for a total of $135,858.64. And that money would be transferred to General Insurance of $22,508. Public Safety, $61,271.10. Public Works, $11,079.54. Culture and Recreation, $41,000 even, for a total of $135,858.64.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion? It should be noted that the simple majority required. Mr. Lor?
Correct. It is a simple majority required. If approved, this article would essentially transfer the $135,858.64 from those three categories to the other four categories of $135,858.64.
It should also be noted, this is fairly a standard practice in the last month of the fiscal year. There's a little bit of -- there's some permission or some authorization for the town to move funds between various lines in the budget, where a budget is an estimate from the previous year, from the previous cycle. So everything balances in the end, and really, the important thing here is that the totals for transferred from and transferred to are equal. So, okay. No further questions? Article Three.
I move that the town vote to fix the compensation of elected officers, provide for reserve fund, and to raise and appropriate, including appropriations from taxation by transfer from available funds, all specified below, the sum of $41,855,721, to defray charges and expenses to the town, including debt and interest, and a reserve fund for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, as outlined in Table Two of the Finance Committee report, with the following revenue sources. Taxation, $39,840,187. Ambulance fund, $616,356. Perpetual care interest, $332. Sale of cemetery lots, $7,285. Cell tower revenue, $55,776. Bond premium release, $102,515. Marijuana impact fees, $314. Free cash, $233,453. And to authorize the following transfers. Sewer fund indirect costs to general fund, $253,439. Water fund indirect cost to general fund, $309,759. Stormwater indirect cost to general fund, $165,305. Requires a simple majority vote.
Ms. Hilton?
Bonnie Hilton, 129 Village Street. One of the reasons that I'm here tonight is because I'm, like many people in town, I think, struggling with an issue that some of you have struggled with for a long time, and that is how the monies that are collected for our enterprise funds are allocated for indirect costs. And the monies that you just described being transferred from the specific funds back to the general fund seem like big sums of money to me. I'm interested in knowing how those indirect costs -- who and how determines those indirect cost allocations.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. So in general, and I'm going to invite Mr. Kozinski up in a minute, but in general, the select board is responsible. They've voted on how to assign, allocate cost, indirect cost. That is an estimate that they've done in terms of how much, for instance, how much time the assessor's office, or the tax collector's office, or the billing department spends sending out sewer bills, or water bills, or water enterprise. So they estimate that. In addition -- so that's -- and those are truly indirect costs. There's no separate -- there is not a separate billing department for the enterprises. And the reason that the town does that is because it's deemed to be the most efficient way to do it, instead of having duplicative departments. So of those indirect costs, which is included in -- I don't have the schedule in front of me, but they've essentially said that, you know, 10 percent -- of 100 percent of those costs, that they estimate, a certain percentage is allocated to billing, a certain percentage is allocated to assessing, et cetera, et cetera. And before I butcher this anymore, save me, Mr. Kozinski.
You're doing a great job, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thanks.
Just a couple of things. First of all, the indirect costs fall into two categories. One has to do with the health insurance and pensions of the individuals that contribute time to the water and sewer and stormwater enterprises. So those costs are part of the payment for those benefits for those employees. So those funds you don't see in the DPW budget, or the water, sewer, stormwater budget, those fall within the general health insurance and retirement budgets. The second part of the formula has to do with what most people would understand the private sector as overhead. So in order to run those enterprises, there's certain cost factors that go into that. There's sending out the water bills, the sewer bills, the stormwater bills from the Treasury Department. There's the Finance Department doing the payroll for all those employees. There's certain management aspects.
HR.
There's HR. The percentages used in that schedule are generally accepted percentages that are used widely across Commonwealth and have been confirmed by our outside consultants as reasonable. We do take a look at those every year, and we will continue to do so, and we'd be happy to continue that discussion. But this is the same as what was put forward last year.
Can you take just a moment to characterize the Paradigm study and the three-year rolling average for cost accounting, essentially?
Right. When that study was done a number of years ago, they recommended that the town base -- the indirect cost aspect is part of it, but it's separate from the -- a little bit separate from the three-year average. Three-year average has to do with looking at how much time the employees put into the different cost centers.
So direct costs.
Right. Direct costs, more so. That does roll over into the indirects, in that those hours are the basis for finding out, you know, the health insurance and the pension costs. That's used as a basis of the percentages. And then, again, the general overhead are percentages that are generally accepted in the industry, in municipal government, for departments that don't have a totally separate water district or sewer district that works independently.
Okay. Ms. Hilton, did we answer your question?
Yes. I was formulating the answer. Yes, I think I'm going to have to meet perhaps with Mr. Kozinski to get some more specific answers, but thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say, Mr. Chair, you know, to get into the details of that would take some time, but I'd be happy to meet with, you know, anyone interested in having that discussion.
Sure. We've -- as Ms. Hilton said, we've discussed this and, in some cases, struggled with it over many -- over several years now. Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee has toiled on this issue, as has the Select Board, as we have. I think that those costs have been brought more in line. I wouldn't say that they're perfect, but I would say that the town has made strides to correct and adhere to the recommendations that Paradigm has made. It'll be a continuous process, certainly with the direct costs. So I'll leave it at that, and we're happy to, you know, answer further questions on it. I did want to take, in terms of discussion on the budget, obviously, there are some large -- there's a large deficit this year that I'll speak to at town meeting. A large -- there's not a large deficit in the budget. There was a large deficit, a challenge before us, in terms of how to overcome a budget gap, which the school, you know, has, in terms of most of it being sped costs. We have a balanced budget being proposed as part of these figures here, and the way that the town has proposed, and for consideration at town meeting, to bridge the gap is through a number of means. One, use available free cash, a substantial portion of the town's free cash, to apply to the school budget, as well as stabilization funds, withdrawal from the stabilization funds account, which you'll see in the next two articles, those two issues. There is an increase in the school's budget from usually, what is usually 4% to 6%, an increase. So there are a number of measures that are included in these figures in Article Three, which will be detailed at town meeting. And there will also be an extensive discussion of the costs, as to why the -- what is the genesis or the origin of the increase to the school budget, which is -- majority of it is unanticipated or -- and/or out of the town's control. We're not alone. Milis is not alone, in the sense that there are several, many, many towns that have shortfalls in their budget, specifically in their school budget, due to increase in sped costs and sped requirements. So that will be discussed as well. This committee heard, as well as the Select Board, heard many proposals from town departments to increase service levels. Virtually all of those are -- virtually none of those are included in this budget proposal. There's very limited increase in service levels, and as well as capital requests. Very few of the capital requests made during this budget cycle are included in the budget because of the aforementioned reason that the most of the free cash is being used to fund as a one-time infusion for resources to bridge that gap. I would remind us that, coincidentally, in the fall, the town voted to appropriate $500,000 of free cash, which is a bit in advance of when we would normally do it, but we appropriate -- we voted to appropriate $500,000 for sidewalks and roads, which typically would be done this time of year. So that is -- and I bring that up because several people have made the point that the town's budget is being sacrificed for the school. That is a valid point in some cases, but it's not the big -- it's not the whole story. Part of the story must include the fact that the town has already appropriated $500,000 for paving and sidewalk projects, something that, you know, many of us have advocated for over the years. So I'm glad to see that that's happening. Any more questions on the operating budget?
Mr. Chair, just something else.
Ms. McInnes.
Just popped up here, if I could ask. In the indirect costs, I've heard about pensions. Does any of this money go toward the OPEB? Toward the DPW's portion of OPEB?
No.
No?
No, I don't believe so.
So when you mention it's pensions?
Well, our pension assessment from Norfolk County. Every year, we get an assessment, and a portion of that is attributed to the enterprise funds based on the hours and FTEs within those cost centers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then, just one further note. I did attend the school committee meeting last night, and there will be further discussion on this, but I would say that the -- this budget, and as the school committee has presented several times to us and to the Select Board and at their own meetings, includes cuts to staff and faculty. And, you know, that can't be lost, in the sense that we have a balanced budget that's being proposed, but the school committee recognized that if, unless the town collaborated on a budget, that they would have to make substantial cuts. And it was proposed, essentially, seven FTE full-time equivalent positions to 14 roughly full-time equivalents, up to, I think, 21 or 27 potentially, if their shortfall of close to $2 million wasn't -- if a funding source was not identified. The town identified substantial infusion of resources to help with that. And so the -- this budget includes seven, up to close to seven FTE cuts, which, early on in the budget process, the school committee, rightfully so in my opinion, chose not to air, not to discuss publicly the details of that. But I would tell you that that picture is coming clearer. They have communicated to the extent that they're comfortable communicating publicly as to where those cuts are going to come, with departments, essentially. Certainly no names, but I think that -- I know that they've communicated with those people that potentially could be affected, as well as kind of the second-order effects, because there are people that could -- their positions, if they're encumbered positions, they could be identified for a cut, but they could bump somebody else. And so that somebody else has been communicated with in terms of that potential. And then another piece of the cuts that this includes, which is something that we asked from the get-go, was are there positions that are currently unencumbered that can remain unencumbered, and those positions be cut? And I think that that's a smart way to minimize the impact. If, essentially, if the school has an unfilled position that they are currently making do, somehow, that they cut those positions and continue to make do, or eliminate the program potentially, or the program element altogether. And so that's included as well. Several of their cuts are, I would say, partial cuts, you know, partial FTEs by decimals, not necessarily -- they're not all ones, they're not all whole numbers. In addition, their staff and administration has foregone raises, potentially, to help bridge that gap. So that's -- I'm paraphrasing in terms of what has -- what the latest is. There are a couple of members of the school committee here, and if you have anything that you think I haven't added, or you'd like to add, I'd invite you to come forward and, you know, have a moment at the mic. If not, I know you've had plenty of time at the mic, and, you know, you'll have more time at the mic come next week. None heard? Any further questions on Article Three? Scott?
Thank you. Good job, Mr. Chairman, explaining all that. What bothers me, and I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, that I didn't see one of our state reps at any of these meetings, Select Board meetings, and I, you know, and that bothered me, because they're our state reps. They're the state, and they're the ones that we need to rely on. This is a hit to the town, and I'm not blaming anyone in the school committee, but our state reps should have been present at these meetings. Yeah, there'll be a town meeting next week. That's well and great, but that's the last hour. You know, they should have been at this meeting, they should have been at the Select Board meetings. They're our state reps. We voted for them. So that bothers me. So I think this board did a good job listening, the school did a good job presenting, but they should have been at these meetings and at the Select Board meetings. They're our elected officials. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Chair.
One minute.
Unrelated, but I just need to call the Select Board meeting to order since we have a quorum. So I'm going to call the Select Board meeting of Wednesday, April 26, to order. In attendance is myself, Erin Underhill, and our clerk, Ellen Rosenfeld. And we'll do the rest of our stuff later.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Crone?
In light of what you just said, I think what's also unfortunate is, reading in recent articles about the billions of dollars, or more than $1 billion that we're going to be getting from the millionaires' tax, I didn't see anything about funding special education. In all of those fundings that they talked about, not one of them was for special education, which appears to be, not just in this community, but in most communities throughout the Commonwealth, one of the biggest problems that we have, an unfunded mandate for special education. So that's sad, and I think you're right. Not only is it sad they're not here, but it's sad they're not there pushing for the type of aid that pretty much every community in this state needs.
I don't mean to -- so I've also done some research. I believe that the governor's initial budget included $75 million for special education, and then there was a supplemental bill for another $20 million in reserve, which is actually FY23 dollars, as I understand it. I believe there is some money.
Some.
However, the Chapter 70 aid, local aid that usually comes to Milis and all towns, all 351 towns, Milis is going to have an increase of 0.66 percent. And there's a number of different aids that come to the town. In the end, the net aid that Milis is going to receive is actually a decrease from the state this year. There are plenty of towns of the 351 that are getting huge infusions of cash, and they are not towns like Milis. I'm going to choose my words carefully and make sure that people know that at our town meeting. And I'll be delicate, maybe not. I'll be diplomatic, in the sense of how I do that. I think our reps know that, but that's not to say that -- I don't know that our town knows that, that our state aid is actually, you know, it's basically not increasing at all, despite a 14 percent increase in out-of-district costs. So it is a true unfunded mandate. Okay? All right. Thank you. Article Four. Alluded to it earlier. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $538,697 for supplemental funding for the school department. Said supplemental funding being intended to support special education-related services for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. This will be voted as a simple majority discussion. So I've more or less covered this already, but in terms of background, the committee and the Select Board, the committee made a recommendation to the Select Board that there be some -- rather than having all of the funding sources wrapped up into a single article, Article Three, the operating budget, we requested a little bit of language from the Select Board in the warrant that added some specificity in terms of what the intent of the money was for, so that in the event that the town were to receive funds from the state between now and the start of the fiscal year, or at some point, say, out of cycle during the next fiscal year, that we knew exactly how much should go back to free cash. I have no doubt that that would be the intent, but this is a record of it. This will be voted on, and that's why Article Four is in here, so that it doesn't get lost in the 40-something million dollars that, you know, there are -- there's a lot of talk, as Mr. Crone just alluded to, and as we've seen in articles, there's a lot of talk about people advocating for the need for the state to recalculate how they -- recalculate their methodology for state aid and sped funding. That may happen at some point during the fiscal year. I somewhat doubt it. The town has gone through a letter-writing process in terms of the Select Board has written letters, the school board has written letters. I know numerous citizens have written letters, and perhaps that moves the needle and gets some action. I don't know. But there's a lot of work to be done for the school budget going forward. This really is a stopgap action. This is not going to solve This is not going to solve the problem for next year. It really buys us time. It either buys the state time to fix the, the problem, or it buys us time for unfortunately what could be further cuts, which could be a tax override for next year. This does not, this is a temporary solution to what appears to be a somewhat permanent problem unless the state acts. So, that's Article IV. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Hilton.
Bonnie Hilton, 129 Village. I have read in some of the material that was provided to us, that of the significant fundings that we received last year in school from the so-called COVID funds, designed to help cover unusual expenses that occurred because of the pandemic, those monies, I'd like to know how those monies were used in general, recognizing we can't give specifics. Are any of the seven full-time equivalent people, for example, were they funded with the COVID funds? Were the COVID funds budgeted with a sense knowing that those monies were going to go away? Or were they built into the budget figuring, well, we'll figure a way to cover that in the future? Does that?
I believe I understand your question.
Okay.
I don't think that I can answer it.
Okay.
And if, if the school committee, Mr. Conroy, would like to take a chance at it, then I'd appreciate it. Yes, please.
Thanks, Mark Conroy, School Committee. In the presentation that I gave to you guys, and also to the select board, we highlighted the specific positions that were funded with the COVID funding that we received in fiscal '21 and fiscal '22. The positions that were, were used, in fiscal '21, just again, to give some highlights, we received $156,000 that went towards salaries. $110,000 of that went to short-term substitutes that were used to cover when people had to quarantine. Those positions don't exist in fiscal '23, they're not part of the fiscal '24 issue. That is the same situation with, with the exception of fractions of a couple of positions. The funding, the positions that were funded with COVID funding in fiscal '21 and fiscal '22 are not currently staffed this year, and they are not in the budget for next year. And again, in the presentation that I gave, which is online, it lists the exact positions that were covered in each of the years, and the status of those positions in fiscal '23 and fiscal '24 are also in the presentation.
Mr. Conroy, I re-reviewed those slides today, and I don't remember off the top of my head, I think they were May 18th or May 22nd was the presentation, do you happen to know? Just so that, I want to make sure that I, sorry, March, I wanted to just direct people to them. But they are on, those slides that are referred, are on the school committee website, there's a link to them, they are pretty easy to find, I found them, there's a tile, you can see.
I think they're on ours, too.
Yeah. So, anyway, those slides that you referred to are available.
Is there a possibility to explain about the, it's the out-of-district, it's out-of-district costs, it's a 14% increase of out-of-districts, and it was the way the monies were used and during COVID by those out-of-district companies, schools? And unfortunately, they were used as incentives and bonuses as opposed to maintaining, yeah. And so, the 14% was before Governor Baker left, he mandated that this amount, this 14% increase would be implemented, and unfortunately, our towns have to come up with that money. So, some people might say it was mismanagement of funds, that would be, that's not my.
Not here.
Right, right, correct. But I'm saying, the, the impression people are getting is that it was mismanagement of funds, and unfortunately, that mismanagement of funds is kicking the towns in the you-know-what. And we're not the only town there, it's, the major, there are a bunch of towns in this Commonwealth of Massachusetts that have been affected by this and are in deficit. Some of the towns have stabilization funds for this, special ed stabilization funds that have already been put in place, and because of that, they can tap into that rather than coming to the town's free cash. So, that's why we're in, you know, just to try, you know, to try and explain, and I hope I'm not stepping out of line by doing that, I just think it's important, that some people don't understand that it isn't something our school department did that was inaccurate and misappropriation of funds, or used funds the way they shouldn't have been used, or whatever explanation, it's just that this was, this was to cover out-of-district expenses, the increase of 14%.
It's not, that's not 100% accurate.
Okay, see.
There's a, a large portion of the school deficit was from out-of-district costs, but a large, another portion of it was from increase in sped requirements that are right here, internal to the school staff. So, there are additional sped requirements, when you factor that in, and you also factor in the reduction, or just the flatlining of aid from the state, it all adds up. So, there's a number of different elements that have been covered, in addition to what you said.
Correct.
Out-of-district costs as well are part of it. So, Mr. McCaffrey.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Jim McCaffrey, I live at 21 Jameson Drive. I don't have any office, so I'm not here to tell you anything that's really something that, inside information. I would just like to make a general comment. At this point, this year, the school department is certainly on bullseye for a state mandate that is clearly mandated from the state, and something that this community has been behind from day one in terms of sped, meeting the needs of special ed students. The state has changed the rules and has left us holding the bag. I don't know how, any other way to put it. I wish I could say that's the only thing. You may all recall that the DEP also changed the rules for PFAS, which left us holding the bag for millions and millions of dollars. This is a, and that, just as far as I can see, the cherry sheet, which is the full amount of state reimbursement, is an increase of almost zero. So, the state has mandated a whole series of things, right now we're facing one that's particularly acute because of the school department, but this is a big problem. And I always, you hear about more taxes, you hear about millionaires tax and all that kind of thing. At this point, at the local level, we are not getting any commensurate aid from, aid from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that's the fact.
Thank you. Any further discussion? None heard? Okay, Article V. I move that the town vote to transfer from stabilization fund the sum of $400,000 for supplemental funding for the school department. Said supplemental funding being intended to support special education-related services for fiscal year beginning July 1st. This will take a two-thirds majority, should be noted, as votes for, votes where a debit is made from stabilization that requires a two-thirds majority. I would say, I would just remind people again what I previously said on why this is a separate article. This is not a precedent in terms of the town using stabilization funds to, for various budget items. The stabilization policy for Milis uses the following words, they are, this is, the stabilization policy is a goal. The goals within that policy is 5% of the operating budget of the town. And that's calculated at various times, actually, I think it's June 30th every year is when it's calculated. And that value of that stabilization account fluctuates all the time based on the investments that are within, investments, how the markets and various funds perform over the course of the year. The town has made numerous, numerous withdrawals from that account over the year, from, usually, typically, it's done for snow and ice removal, because that's very, obviously, very difficult to budget accurately. That's not to say that we haven't, that the town hasn't voted, that town meeting hasn't voted to make withdrawals from the stabilization count. And the stabilization policy says any legal purpose, I'm paraphrasing, but any, any legal reason, doesn't have to be, although, in most cases, it's meant to be for unforeseen or emergent type funding, funding needs. If, if not cutting our school staff by, say, 14 or 27 faculty and administration staff is, if that's not an emergency, I'm not sure what is, because if you think that the school can operate with 27 less staff and educators, I would disagree with you. And I would say that this is definitely an emergent need. Previous withdrawals have been made for firefighting equipment, for police, police vehicles, not that long ago, within, probably within 10 or 12 years, those withdrawals have been made. The policy does include the provision that anything taken out of stabilization be paid back within three years. That can be done all at once, or it can be done over the course of three years. And the stated intent of both the select board and the finance committee is that that is what will happen, likely out of few years free cash, is typically how, how that occurs. Every time that the stabilization fund has been withdrawn from, the rainy day fund has been used, the town has paid it back. So, there has been responsible use for the stabilization fund. As an aside, the state's stabilization fund is $9 billion. It's about to be $9 billion by the end, by the start of FY25, it's projected to be. It's upwards of over $7.5 billion right now. State may not see it our way in terms of whether, you know, I don't know that if they could say it's unforeseen, that, that the costs that are being driven, but it's certainly unforeseen to us that costs go up and sped requirements go up, and there's no means to, there's no state aid commensurate with that. So, that said, any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, none heard. Thank you. Article VI.
I move that the town vote to ratify the following collective bargaining agreements, Town of Milis SEIU Local 888, Professional Firefighters Local 4704, and Ask Me Council 93 Local 3901, all to be retroactive to July 1st, 2022. The ratification at town meeting of these collective bargaining agreements is mandated under state law, and they can't be funded unless it, they are ratified at town meeting. So, this would allow for the funding of these agreements that were collectively bargained.
Any further discussion?
I'll make that a simple majority required.
Okay, none heard. Next, Article VII.
Article VII will ask voters to raise and appropriate from sewer department receipts the following sums noted in the warrant to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund beginning July 1, 2023, for a total of $1,637,826, and a simple majority is required.
Discussion.
This article appropriates funding, including funds for personnel costs, contract expenses, and debt service necessary to operate the town's sewer service and infrastructure. This utility enterprise is funded by sewer user rate payers based on metered or estimated usage.
Okay. Article VIII.
Article VIII will ask voters to raise and appropriate from water department receipts the following sums to operate the Water Enterprise Fund beginning July 1, 2023, for a total of $2,9,736.
Need discussion?
This article appropriates funding, including funds for personnel costs, contract expenses, and debt service necessary to operate the town's water service and infrastructure. This utility enterprise is funded by water rate payers based on metered or estimated usage.
Okay. Article IX.
Article IX will ask voters to raise and appropriate from stormwater department receipts the following sums to operate the Stormwater Enterprise Fund beginning July 1, 2023, for a total of $726,733, a simple majority. And this article appropriates funding, including funds for personnel costs, contract expenses, and debt service necessary to operate the town's storm drain system. This utility enterprise is funded by impervious square footage fees calculated to each property.
Any further discussion? Consent, Article X.
So, Article X is a consent article that has four parts, right? So, the first part will amend the Schedule A for the salary plan, and Schedule C, the employee benefits of the Town of Milis Personnel Plan for non-union employees effective July 1st, 2023. I believe parts of that will be provided, either they're in the warrant, the, this booklet, or they'll be provided at town meeting. That's typically how we've done it. Any, do you want me to just go part by part? Any questions?
Sure.
Any questions on the first part of Consent, Article X? All right. The second part, we have to do this every year, this will authorize the Board of Health to appoint any of its members to another town office or position for which it has appointing authority, and we just have to authorize that every year. Any questions about that? The third part will authorize, in, in like fashion, we have to do this every year to authorize certain revolving funds. So, when I read the article, we'll have Oak Grove Farm Maintenance Fund, Animal Control Shelter Fund, Fire Alarm Fund, Historical Commission Fund, Ambulance Department Fund, Council on Aging Transportation Fund, VMB Custodial Maintenance Fund, School Food Service Fund, School Transportation Fund, Stormwater Management Fund, Border Health Medical Services Vax Fund, Border Health Rabies Clinic Program Fund, School Athletic Fields Fund, School Extracurricular Fund, Library Special Use Fund, and Tobacco Control Program. So, these are all just more or less authorizing the town to use these revolving funds that have their own sources of revenue.
Could you, Ms. Garzon?
Yeah.
Could you kindly make sure in your discussion that you explain the difference, or just explain that these are from programs that are somewhat self-funded or fee-based, self-generating, self-revenue generating programs?
Mm-hmm.
And that's why they're separate from the budget?
Yes. All right. Any, any questions on that third part of this consent article? And then, the fourth part deals with community preservation funds, and this will allocate those funds into various reserves as are required by the Community Preservation Act for administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses for the next fiscal year. And so, there'll be several appropriations into four different reserve funds. So, any questions about that part?
Mr. Chairman, may I go back to Part A?
Yes.
Sorry, you were faster than I was. I'm just interested to know where do the amendments to the non-union employee salary schedule and benefits package put us in comparison to other towns? And was this arrived at through one of the many studies that we seem to do?
So, Mr. Kaczynski is the expert on this, but from what we have heard in our meetings, it only affects a few employees in town, and it tries to put employees kind of on the same footing, those who are union and non-union, for certain benefits like holidays and, and whatnot, so that everyone kind of has the same holidays. But why don't you explain much more in detail?
Yes.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The changes to the personnel plan, first and foremost, there's a two percent COLA for those that are affected directly by the plan that are not in a union. And as far as the amendments, the amendments in the plan are basically making changes that bring the benefits in line, generally in line with all of our collective bargaining agreements. So it just makes sure that those employees don't fall too far behind as far as benefits. And, and those benefits generally only affect three employees that are full-time, and the only three employees that are not either under contract or within a collective bargaining agreement. It's a small group.
And in our FinCom packet, you can, I'm sure you found them, on page twenty-seven and twenty-eight is the Schedule A changes, and twenty-nine through, looks like, twenty-nine through thirty-three are the Schedule C changes.
Any further discussion? None heard. Article eleven.
Mr. Chair, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund for the Oak Grove Farm Trail Improvement Project. This requires a simple majority. This, in the previous article, we allocated funds that are collected each year to the Open Space Reserve Fund in the amount of thirty-three thousand and change. This money goes to finish the trail improvements that are much needed in Oak Grove Park, which is the most-used public space in town. Any questions?
In your, in your discussion comments, if you could just add a sentence or two on kind of scope of the work, as was, as we were presented, I think, at our last meeting two weeks ago, trail work, bridge work, just a little bit more specific than...
I can, I can do that.
Thank you.
I'll be there tomorrow to specify where silt socks have to go.
Okay, Article twelve.
Article twelve.
You sure you want to read that motion?
I sure do.
You do?
Do you know, want me to, Mr. Chair?
No, I don't.
Okay. I move that the town vote to transfer from the, from the twenty-three categories that are listed here to fund the capital planning requests, seven, the capital planning requests of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. If approved, Article twelve requests the town to raise appropriate transfer from available funds, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, to fund seven capital requests for multiple departments for fiscal year '24. Each fiscal year, the Capital Planning Committee goes through the process to review and prioritize the capital request for each department. This process helps the Select Board determine which capital items will be considered at town meeting.
I would just, and wasn't trying to be funny, but one of the things that, that definitely warrants mention is, and that will be read at town meeting, is a full page of motion narrative or text. And what I didn't want necessarily for John to read tonight was that there are probably two dozen projects that were previously funded at town meeting dating back many, many years, 2016, 2018, 2013, where there were funds left over on the projects, and the town, the Finance Director and staff went through to essentially clear those funds, and so that the town is able to recapture them for capital expenditures. So not all of the funding is coming from those projects, but a good portion of those, which is basically like, you know, if you had money left over in an account and you just left it there, that's what we're, that's what the Finance Director staff has avoided. They've recaptured those dollars so that they could be used on projects that the Select, that the capital finance, excuse me, the Capital Planning Committee recommended and that the Select Board selected for funding. So you don't need to go through that, but because I cut you off, just, it's worthy saying.
Understood, and appreciate, my intention is though to read through that entire motion.
You have to.
Understood. And then I, just so we're on the same page also, I have supporting points for all the requests as well, that I will not go into now, if discussion is needed at town meeting.
Does anybody have any questions on specific projects? Or I see two hands raised, whether it's that question or other questions. Ms. Harden.
Lisa Harden, 56 Walnut Street, Town Clerk. I was just wondering if it would be helpful or just more confusing for the public to have a handout with all of us? Are they gonna, because they're not going to know anything about this until John reads it, and it is kind of complicated. It's just, I'm just throwing it out there.
It's a good question. My personal opinion, and I will certainly, it's open for discussion, is that it can be summarized and explained and then listed, and it's not worth the expense of necessarily going through, you know, having handouts for up to, you know, eight, nine hundred people. It will be read, there can be an explanation, you know, a number of projects to summarize it, is my opinion. If somebody has a different opinion, please feel free to opine.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to have any kind of visuals available for the meetings?
Typically not.
I was gonna say you could put it up on the screen, but...
Haven't done that in a while.
I personally think it's minutia.
Yeah. Sorry, just to jump in, I have the information here, and if the question does come up, I'll be more than happy to explain it during the presentation at town meeting.
Mr. Kaczynski, do you agree, disagree? I'm curious your opinion.
I think you should have a coffee, Senator. You should have a coffee.
I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think it is minutia in the big picture. I think the public should be made aware that these are projects that have been completed, those funds are no longer needed, and all of these remaining funds will be put together to help fund current projects. Probably won't be the main focus or concern of most of the people at the meeting, so I'm not sure if doing a separate handout, I mean, certainly we can, if it's the desire of the Finance Committee, but, you know, we could have another stack of papers for that. But I agree, I don't really think it's necessary, that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Joyce?
My only concern is if he reads them at town meeting and they don't have it in front of them, it's going to confuse things. So either he doesn't read them...
He has, he has to read them.
Well, then...
And, you know, any other opinions?
I think it will confuse them more if we give them the handout, because then they're going to want to ask about where everything's coming from. I don't understand, what's this project from 2016? I think it'd just be easier if John, like you said, just puts the explanations and answers the questions up top.
Okay.
He'll just lull them to sleep with the article. What'd you say? He'll just lull everyone to sleep by reading the warrant, the motion.
Ultimately, I don't want to spend a lot of time and effort talking about two hundred and twenty-one dollars that came from one of these particular projects, and the big scheme of things, we're talking about a forty-one million dollar budget. And, and again, two well-written sentences up front that explain, you know, and here's the details, and your discussion, because this can't change, but your discussion can...
Correct. Understood.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Garzon.
I would like to highlight the incredible work of our Town Finance Director in pulling these funds from all, like, two hundred and twenty-one dollars from, you know, one of these warrant articles. We appreciate all the work that went into that.
I second that.
It's minutia, but it's work.
Just doing her job.
She's doing, she's, we, I agree, I absolutely agree with that, and she's only making her job harder because, you know, we, she keeps doing it, and she's now down to two hundred and twenty-one dollars on a single project. Next year, it'll be down to, you know, six dollars and thirty-two cents or something, which, you know, every little bit helps, but it's not easier to find dollars after you've gone through this exercise. Okay. No further discuss, I'm sorry, Ms. Hilton, I beg your pardon.
Bonnie Hilton, 129 Village. If I recall correctly, John Barry, when he did the presentation about the Capital Planning Committee's priorities, he said that something that they qual, that they classified as a medium priority, like the wireless upgrade for the school, could easily become a higher priority if something crashed. So I'm looking at, we have one of their medium and one of their lower priorities that have moved up for funding, and I'm wondering if that's a result of something having quote-unquote "crashed."
I don't believe so. I believe that based on the amount of available funds, sometimes the Select Board picks from lower priorities, they don't necessarily go in order. They, they try to fund, and I don't want to speak for them, but they try to fund the higher priority items that, that there are funds available for, and if they get down to, say, their last fifty thousand dollars or the last thirty thousand dollars that they are willing to propose, then they may pick off some of the medium and lower priorities. I don't believe that there's anything that is either imminent or has failed, otherwise the priority would have gone up.
So then, just a quick follow-up, the question that I asked before the meeting started, Mr. Underhill had asked at a previous meeting, I forget which one, whether the lighting management system at the library, if part of the reason for that was in case of an emergency situation, and I'd really like to know the answer to that, to know whether that's, how that would figure into the decision as to whether a dump truck is more important, for example, than lighting safety, that's all.
Okay. You and I spoke before the meeting, I have not followed up with Mr. Barry since our presentation in terms of seeking an answer to that question. I will ask Mr. Lourdes to discuss.
In process, I'll fly over to Mr. Barry as well as the Select Board.
Okay. And then, Mr. Kaczynski, it sounds like you have something you want to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't mean to hijack your meeting, like, coming up here in five minutes, but just a couple of things. Yes, it is true that the library lighting was ranked higher than the school wireless. We also, the library building repairs was ranked higher than the lighting, so that was put as the priority, and as you see, the wireless upgrade is only sixty-eight thousand, where the, the lighting was going to be a hundred and ten thousand. And with the DPW items, the difference there is those, the funding for those are coming from many different funding sources, so the, the impact on the general fund is much less. So the ability to do that is much easier from a general fund affordability perspective. So that's why there's certain items on here that are ranked lower, that are up there, against some other items that are ranked higher and that are not. And it's, it is difficult to piece this all together every year. We take, the Select Board takes the recommendations and the rankings from the Capital Committee, looks at the funding availability, and does its best to try to make that work as best as possible.
Thank you.
I do believe that the library lighting project will be a priority for consideration at the fall town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Nothing further? Article thirteen.
I move that the town vote to borrow under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, any other enabling authority, the sum of six hundred and fourteen, six thousand, six hundred and five, for the lease, lease slash purchase of up to six buses for the Millis Schools. This will require two-thirds majority.
Discussion.
So I have a lengthy discussion, but I'm going to just minimize it for tonight, in case. This article is authorizing the town to enter into a five-year lease agreement for up to six new replacement buses in the amount of six hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars for the Millis Public Schools. The first year cost of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one is included in Article Three, FY24 Operating Budget. At the completion of the five-year lease, four buses will be returned, and two buses will be available for purchase for one dollar.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? None heard. Article fourteen.
I move that the town vote to borrow under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, any other enabling authority, the sum of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars for the lease slash purchase of one police cruiser. This will require two-thirds majority.
Discussion.
Again, I'm just going to minimize my discussion. This article is authorizing the town to enter into a three-year lease to purchase agreement for one new replacement police cruiser in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. The first year cost of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars and sixty-seven cents is included in Article Three, FY24 Operating Budget. The cruiser will be available for purchase for one dollar after the completion of the third-year lease.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much. Article fifteen.
Mr. Chair, I move that the town vote to adopt the following resolution as written. I will read it at town meeting, but as written here tonight, unless someone objects. In 2015, Millis became a green community. Since then, we've received one point two million dollars in related grants. This resolution is not mandated and does not commit the town to any regulations. If approved, this article will allow the Millis Energy Committee to continue its work to secure future grants for this town. Needs simple majority to be approved.
Can I just ask, and maybe you have that, that, one, you specify who submitted it, and that you may have, and I missed that, but more importantly, that you give a quick synopsis of funding that's already been secured by grants by the committee? In other words, just a, in the past five years, ten years, the committee has secured three dollars in grants. I mean, I know it's not, I'm being facetious now.
But I said one point two million.
I missed it, I fell asleep.
Oh, okay.
As long as you just synopsize it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
My mind's on the Bruins right now, I'm sorry.
All right, fair enough.
If you could just make sure that that's in there...
Sure, and it says at the bottom, submitted by the Millis Energy Committee, and I'll make sure when I read that, I'll add that at the end.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm sorry. Article sixteen.
So Article sixteen was submitted by the Board of Health to delete Article twenty-three of Millis General Bylaws and replace it entirely with the language that's in the warrant, and this would be to basically replace the plastic bag reduction bylaw. This replacement should remove conflicting and/or ambiguous language that currently stands in the bylaw, and just clean it up.
Discussion.
Does the whole thing need to be read, or is that...
Nope, I don't have to read it, with the language as written in the warrant. It's beautiful.
Good.
No one wants to sit here and listen to me read a bylaw.
I'm just thinking, the person that's going to say, "I don't like those bags."
Yeah.
Okay, no further discussion heard. Article seventeen.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for the Unemployment Insurance Fund. This requires a simple majority.
Discussion.
This is a routine article, the town is self-funded, this provides twenty-five thousand dollars to take the fund balance to what the Select Board recommends.
Okay. No further discussion. Article eighteen.
That would be me. Whoops. Let's see. I move that the town vote to establish a Special Education Stabilization Fund in accordance with MGL, Chapter forty, Section thirteen E. This article requires a simple majority.
Discussion.
The purpose of Article eighteen is to create a special stabilization fund. Although the town is not appropriating any funds into this account at this time, a future town meeting may do so when funding is available. The Special Stabilization Fund would provide an emergency reserve of funding should there be a mid-year shortfall in the school budget due to unexpected out-of-district sped costs, including tuition and transportation costs. Authorization to expend funds out of the Special Education Stabilization Fund would require the approval of both the Select Board and the School Committee. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article unanimously.
I may have to seek clarification, unless you know the answer, Mike, and that is, one of the things Joyce just said was that it's for out-of-district sped costs. I don't think we're limiting, I don't think the intent is to limit it to, actually, I would pose it to the Select Board, not, sorry, the School Committee. I just want to make sure it's, is it with all sped costs or just out-of-district costs? costs?
It would be unbudgeted, unforeseen.
Okay.
In that year, so it's not going to be under budget, and then rely on that.
But if they had an IEP that changed mid-year and added requirement for resources, whether they be for a para to be hired in the school, that would be an unforeseen, unbudgeted, and so we should not limit ourselves to saying out-of-district. It could be including out-of-district costs.
I know it has a line in front of me, but it's specific to the law states.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll clarify the discussion comments. Okay.
Okay. And how about I just say unexpected sped costs?
Yeah.
Unbudgeted, unexpected. Okay.
But that may be a question that comes up, whether it's...they could be used in district if an IEP changes.
Right. Unexpected sped.
Or if it's only for out-of-district.
Okay. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Joyce?
You're very welcome.
Article 19.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds some money for the stabilization fund, or to take any other action in relation thereto. This would require a simple majority vote. The town has adopted a policy of maintaining the stabilization fund equal to 5% of the annual general fund budget expenditures to be used for unforeseen and emergency purposes. Although no funds are anticipated at this time to be appropriated for this purpose, it allows the article to be funded should the funds become available.
Discussion? This one could be a kind of an on-the-fly, may require some adjustments, although the motion is the motion, but if there are amendments to motions or votes go a different way...
Money would be available.
There may be an opportunity to take a recess and craft a motion. I don't know.
As drafted here, it says $0.
Correct, but things that happened before this...
I know. I know.
Well, it says it's not anticipated at this time it'll be funded, but...
But if you read it exactly, it says $0 in the motion packet.
No...Mr. McCaffrey? From a microphone, sir. We're in No Rush. I'm just saying, please come to a mic.
To best of my knowledge, it's one to nothing Panthers.
He's always giving me darts.
To best of my knowledge, it's one to nothing Panthers.
Sir.
I think that...
One to nothing Panthers.
That probably a way to do this, assuming there's no appropriation, is just to make a motion to dismiss it. I mean, why would you make a positive motion? I don't get that.
We discussed that at length, and the result of this discussion, including some advice not to do that, is in the eventuality that if the Article 5 fails, and if there are, you know, if there are changes to the budget, then this allows us to put money in stabilization.
Well, I didn't suggest that if you get to this article and everything else is fine...
Then you're saying dismiss.
Then you can make the motion to dismiss.
Understood.
Yeah, I think the conversation we had about it was that if we did...if this motion does pass, it does give the ability to put money into it at a later time. I think that's what Mr. Kozinski was talking about.
Not without a town meeting vote, though.
Can't add anything to it without a town meeting vote afterwards? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if there's any residual funds at the end of town meeting, and they're not actually placed in a fund or an account or for a specific purpose, simply roll into free cash at the fall. So usually, the goal is to make sure you have some place for all the funds at the town meeting, and generally, why the stabilization article is at the end is because at that point, if there are remaining funds, town meeting can be requested to simply deposit those into the stabilization account. As of right now, if everything is voted as presented, we don't expect any funds to be available for stabilization, but if town meeting takes actions prior in the meeting that are contrary to the proposals, there could be a situation where there's remaining funds that would be recommended to be placed within the stabilization.
So I got to be Peyton Manning with a potential audible at the line?
It's a game day call.
Okay.
That's why we chose you.
Yeah. The new guy, yeah.
Ms. Rayes?
Could that also be true for the Special Education Stabilization Fund that there...could they also move to fund that as well if five days don't pass?
Not as currently written, because it's just to establish, but it would have to be established and fund or transferred. I mean, I would say that any of the funding articles potentially, you know, if there's an amendment, an amendment has to...it can't just say, "I don't want money to go...come out of stabilization." It has to say, to keep a balanced budget, there needs to be an end location for the funds. So...
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Garzon?
Referring to the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, we do have an edit to our municipal finance glossary, which actually provides the language from MGL, Chapter 40, Section 13E, which goes into, you know, how it can be used and how funds can be taken out. So if anyone has any questions about it, check the glossary.
Of our warrant?
Yes.
Yeah. Nice.
Where I have a question, I put it in the glossary.
Article 20.
Mr. Chair, I move that the town vote to dismiss Article 20.
Discussion?
I'm going to ask, to everyone's forbearance, I'm going to go through this, and I'm asking for feedback on this. This article raises the petitioner's concerns about radio frequencies in the town caused by cell tower placement and wireless signal exposure. The petitioners ask the Select Board to send a letter of concern to every state and federal elected official, as well as any related state or federal regulatory agency expressing these concerns. The FCC has made a decision regarding wireless signal exposure that is being contested through the judicial system and is being monitored by Congressman Ed Markey. Setting aside concerns about the validity of the study this petition article is based on, any letter sent by the Millis Select Board will not add anything to the process that is already underway that includes the executive, judicial, and legislative branches of our government. The Finance Committee recommends dismissal of this article.
I...it does sound good. In the first part, I would specifically reference 5G.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's excellent. I believe Mr. Markey is a senator and not a representative.
I said congressman, but I can say senator.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that...
That was my bet.
I know, but...
Yeah, senator works.
Senators a little vain.
Sure.
Of course. Okay. And if...I'm sure that we're all open to comments and edits, suggested edits between now and next week. So if you do, though, if anybody has any edits for a colleague, just ask that you email them and keep the rest of the committee kind of off of the discussion just so that we can abide by the public meeting rules, you know, keep it under five people. Okay. Any follow-up questions, comments on the warrant? Okay. I am going to...none heard. I'm going to close the pre-town meeting public hearing. I'm going to ask for any board or committee liaison updates. None heard. Before I get too far off of the articles, or, excuse me, the warrant, I just wanted to make one comment, and that, in a general comment, is that if your discussion has a reference in this book, please verbalize the reference. So if we're talking about, for instance, enterprise funds, and you're going through the discussion, please reference a page, you know, the page in the warrant booklet that has the budget, your budget items in there. Same thing with for vehicles, for computer leases. I can't remember what the school lease was for. I think it was school buses. So you can reference...those are contained in the budget line on page, whatever it is, just page number, and then you can see that it's within the line number. You don't have to get into specifics, you know, column five, row four. Please don't do that, but at least it helps people, you know, find, you know, if there are other details that could help them understand what we're talking about. So that's for all of the articles. Same thing with the petition article. I think it's in there separately, right? Jody, same thing on the...you already did it. And if anybody needs to make a reference to a glossary term, you know, please add that to your discussion. As defined...you can say, "As defined..." I'm talking about OPEB. It's defined on page 40-something of your Finance Committee report. Okay? Just real basic. It'll help. Already talked about the moderator. We're not going to read the warrant. I talked with him today that, you know, he took the suggestion and ran with it, so there will not be a reading of the warrant, to my knowledge. Discussion of references. Okay. Let's approve bills payable.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Garzon?
Move that we approve the payment of $124.88 to Gatehouse Media for, I believe it's publishing of the notice of Springtown meeting.
Yeah. Second? It's been moved and seconded that the committee vote to approve a bill of $124.88 to Gatehouse Media for printing of notice of the town meeting.
It says recommendations for Springtown meeting.
It's actually the advertisement of tonight's meeting.
Okay.
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 Thank you, Deirdre.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Discussion? None heard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And please sign. Joyce, would you make a motion on this bill?
Sign in pink.
Come on, Joyce.
I move that we appropriate the funds that are needed for the bill. Let's see. It's a schedule of the...
Huh?
It's for the publication of our town warrant.
Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee report. I guess I've been told. In the amount of $6,748.80.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, the committee vote to approve paying of $6,748.80 to our town publishing for printing of the Finance Committee report. All those...discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Jody? Sign. Thank you. Both of those passed unanimously, Deirdre? Okay. I took one action item. I'm sure there were several, but I will follow up with Mr. Barry on the library lighting, just to get an answer to a question posed earlier. Another item that was accurate at the time of writing of the Finance Committee report but has since changed is there will...I fully anticipate that there will be a vacancy on the Finance Committee following town meeting. I can't remember the exact date. Maybe it's July 1st. Mr. Stedman has given his notice that he's completed his term. I want to thank you very much for your contributions.
It's been a pleasure, and I've learned a lot. I think I can be a better informed citizen, having served.
Well, we thank you. You've done a great job, and you've been an addition to the committee for sure. So thank you very much. If there are any other buddy that's thinking about...I want to take the opportunity to make sure that the public knows that there is now a vacancy on the committee. So I'm making that, you know, that call for volunteers now. The place to volunteer is with the town clerk, and perhaps the town moderator, but I would start with the town clerk, and I will do the same at town meeting. And ask that if anybody else is thinking about it, just for the sake...not that you have to, but just for the sake of us, a call for volunteers, that we generate interest, if you could please let me know. You don't have to let me know now. You can email me. You can text me. You can call me. If you could just let me know so that I can be specific with how many anticipated vacancies we have. So that said, any...anybody else have any comments? We will meet, Deirdre. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, May 3rd. Town meeting is at what time, Deirdre?
7:30. So I figured we'd meet at 7:00, and I guess...
Yep. 7 o'clock is fine. I don't think we'll have much in the way of business. So 7 o'clock, and it's usually the second to last room on the right as you enter the high school. I think it's room 104, but I could be wrong.
104. 104.
Okay. All that said, questions, comments? None heard. Take a motion.
You got minutes?
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
I move that we approve the minutes of our meeting on March 29th. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the committee approve the minutes from our March 29th meeting. All...discussion? None heard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'll take another motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 12th meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, the committee vote to approve our meeting minutes from April 12th. Discussion? None heard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
I move for adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Deirdre.
Thank you. We'll see you Wednesday.